Hi, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the June 17, 2019 Crestille City Council Meeting to order. If everyone would please stand for the Pledge Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Ray Solomon.
Here.
Glenn Conklin.
Present.
Scott Dyke.
Here.
John Verche.
Here.
Barbara Schaller.
Here.
Claudia Gazal.
Here.
Tina Oberlin.
Present.
Marco Colli Petro.
Here.
Nate Albert.
Joe Kubo.
Here.
Okay, I did get a phone call from Alderman Albert. He is running a little bit late, so he will be here shortly. You have before you the minutes of the meeting held on June 3, 2019. Motion would be in order? So moved. Motion by Alderman Schler, seconded by Alderman Colli Petro to approve the minutes of the city council meeting held on June 3, 2019. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Joe Kubo.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Barbara Schaller.
Yes.
Marco Colli Petro.
Yeah.
Motion carries.
We also have before you the minutes of the work session held on June 10, 2019. Motion would be in order? So moved. Second. We have motion by Alderman Colli Petro, seconded by Alderman Schler to approve the minutes of the work session held on June 10, 2019. Questions or comments?
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Joe Kubo.
Yes.
Barbara Schaller.
Yes.
Marco Colli Petro.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, Mr. George was supposed to be here for the food pantry, Crestille Food Pantry, so when he shows up, we'll certainly give him the opportunity to speak. With that, we will move on to our city administrator, Heather McGuire. Good evening, Heather.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have three agenda items for your consideration this evening. The first is a resolution authorizing execution of a professional architectural services proposal with United Architects. This would be regarding a space needs analysis for the new city hall and proposed new city hall and police station. Both are each at the cost of $27,500 for a total of $55,000. We did work with United Architects on finalizing our current public works building, so we are proposing the staff level. We move forward with the space needs analysis with them as well.
Again, this was discussed at the last work session held on June 10.
So moved.
Second. We have motion by Alderman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Schler to approve resolution authorizing execution of a professional architectural service proposal with United Architects. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Joe Kubo.
Yes.
Marco Colli Petro.
Yeah.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Barbara Schaller.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution number is 1045.
Thank you. The next item I have for consideration is a resolution authorizing the sale of 1919 Cora Street. This again was discussed at a previous work session, and according to the terms of the initial resolution that would offer this property for sale, the current contract contains provisions that require the garage on the existing property to be demolished by the end of this year, by 12/31/2019, and then a new home constructed with a certificate of occupancy issued by August 31 of 2021. And the current price on the contract is for $13,875.
So moved. Second. Motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Verche for a resolution authorizing the sale of 1919 Cora Street. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Barbara Schaller.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marco Colli Petro.
Yes.
Joe Kubo.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Resolution number 1046.
Thank you. And the final item I have for approval this evening was also discussed at last work session. This is approval for the IML Annual Conference, and this would be for approval for the elected officials, as well as the Director of Public Works to attend the IML Conference this year, including registration, hotel, and parking.
So moved, just presented.
Second. Motion by Alderman Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Colli Petro in regards to the IML Annual Conference. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Barbara Schaller.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Joe Kubo.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Marco Colli Petro.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That's all the items I had for consideration this evening. For the public's information, we will be holding a work session on June 24. Current topics include a hydrant painting vendor, tobacco ordinance revision, and we will also be having a PR marketing update at that time with additional topics currently being developed. I'd be happy to answer any other questions this evening.
Questions of city administrator.
Did we ever get an answer on that question about the street sweeper?
Yes, I did email you the response we got from Patriot. They are reimbursing us for our time and expense on getting our street sweeper out there, so they've already issued us a check on that.
When did you send it?
Last week, early last week. I'll resend it, too. Just to double check it.
I've had so many issues with my email lately.
Yeah, I think it was about, just because it was only a short amount of staff time we had out there, but operations, I believe it was 170, 250 was the total cost on it, but they issued us a check immediately on that.
Thank you very much.
All right, thanks, Heather. Moving on, Public Works Department, our Director of Public Works, Tom Negus. Good evening, Tom.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. There's two items on the agenda this evening. The first is an amendment to Task Order 18-04, which involves the East Plan rerating contract. The scope has changed to include preparing a project plan now as well, which is necessary for IEPA loan funding. That change increases the cost by $18,200, bringing the total to $40,000 now. We seek your approval for that change order in the amount of $18,200.
So moved, just presented.
Second. We have motion by Alderman Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Colli Petro for an amendment to the Strand and Associates to Wastewater Facilities Project Plan Update, Task Order Number 18-04. Questions or comments? And again, this was discussed also at last week's work session. Roll call.
John Verche.
Yes.
Barbara Schaller.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubo.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Marco Colli Petro.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item also involves a change order. This is Task Order Number 17-03, and involves a change in the scope of work to include additional contract language, blueprints, and specifications related to the IEPA loan funding. That change in scope increases the cost by $55,000, bringing the total project in that yard to $376,000. We seek your approval on that change as well.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Gazal for Strand and Associates' amendment to East Water Reclamation Facility in regards to phosphorus removal upgrades, correct?
Yes.
Task Order Number 1703. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marco Colli Petro.
Yes.
Joe Kubo.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Barbara Schaller.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Motion carries. Finally, just a word of notice that Clark Environmental will be spraying for mosquitoes
tomorrow evening throughout all city streets. Smart message has gone out to that effect as well. This is the first spraying of the season. They anticipate a second spraying around the July 4 holiday. And also a note that they are going to be changing their notification process. At this time, phone calls are made. Through some review of their processes, they're going to be moving to a text and email system as that their data has shown that the public is more interested in that version of notification. People with questions or concerns about that can call Clark at 1-800-942-2555. With that, I'd answer any questions you might have.
Questions of Public Works.
So, when I called, just name, I forgot the assistant.
Correct.
Right.
Last week, he said they were not returning his calls.
He was able to make contact, and then he gathered that information recently.
Okay. All right. Also, I want to thank you for the section barriers on Division Street for the gas pipelines.
You're very welcome.
That was like very scary what happened a couple weeks back with the accident, so we were lucky not to hit it. The residents are very happy for your actions, very quickly, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Tom. Moving on, Community Development Department, our Economic Development Director, Scott McMaster. Good evening, Scott.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. A couple of items on tonight's agenda that were both discussed last week at the work session. The first one is the ordinance amending Section 15.12.065 of the City of Crestille Sign Code regarding property rental signs, and that just basically is we're including the yearly fee of 100 back for temporary signs back into that ordinance, which was previously omitted. So I'm seeking approval for that this evening.
So moved, just presented.
Second. Motion by Alderman Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Colli Petro in regards to an ordinance amending Section 15-12-065 of the Crestille Sign Code. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubo.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Barbara Schaller.
Yes.
Marco Colli Petro.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries. Ordinance number is 1812.
Thank you. The second item is, I'll read the tagline because it's a bit lengthy. It's an ordinance of the City of Crestille, Illinois authorizing eligibility study for certain property on Broadway between Theodore and Caton Farm to determine eligibility for property for a tax increment financing. Again, this was discussed last Monday, just to see if we can make a section of Broadway from Theodore to Caton Farm a Tiff District.
So moved. Motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Verche to ordinance authorizing an eligibility study for the Broadway Street Tiff District, which would be between Theodore Street and Caton Farm Road. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Barbara Schaller.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marco Colli Petro.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubo.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Motion carries. Ordinance number 1813.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Questions of Economic Development?
Do units motor move out of the building?
I'm trying to contact them. It seems that they have vacated that property. I'm trying to contact them, as well as contact another lead I have to occupy that space, but I will let you know as soon as we find out. It's been very difficult to try to get in touch with them. I believe they are, it sounds like to me that they've done this before somewhere else. So, yes, so we are.
This is weird. The lights fell, they finally got the lights fixed, and then they're gone. It was like...
Yeah, so we are working on getting in contact with them, as well as trying to find a new user for that site.
What about Mako?
Mako, I heard may have vacated, but I have not confirmed that either. So hopefully, we can get a user that can utilize both spaces there, so.
Volkswagen dealer.
Yes.
Again, what he used to be.
I'm working with somebody who has strong interest in that area.
I bought my first new car there.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks, Scott. Moving on, Police Department, our Police Chief, Ed Clark. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Real quick, I want to introduce our new employee, Lorena Muniz. Come on up in there, Lorena. She's an alumni of JJC. She's got an associate degree in criminal justice, correct? And came from JJC as an employee there. She starts the academy in next week, and she's number 31, so I'm very happy to announce Lorena.
Ever since I started working here, I just wanted to thank everybody for all the support that I've gotten, which is quite a lot. I got an amazing opportunity to work for a great department, and for that, I'm very thankful for. I'm very excited to see what this brings. I became, I just, little about me, I became, or I wanted to become an officer because I wanted to be part of something important in society, and I think law enforcement is an integral part of that. I also wanted to be proud of where I worked, and I wanted my daughter, who is now eight, to be proud of where I worked, and I know this is the perfect place for a good career and for something to set a good example for her. So, thank you.
Just thanks again, City Council. This is number 31. We'll come to number 32, hopefully have that person, an officer in the academy. We're moving up, and we can do a lot of things, so I really appreciate you guys for your support, so moving forward. Thank you.
Well, welcome, Lorena, to the City of Crestille. As I said, when you were sworn in last Monday, you are now the third female police officer that we have on staff. Number 31, we should be at number 32. Hopefully, number 32 will be here in the fall. So we are right where we should be. It's a tough job being a police officer in today's world, so I want to wish you a long career with the City of Crestille. I want to wish you a career that is very safe for you to go home to your family and your daughter every night. So we are here for you as a support. I know that the police chief has a lot of training that he sends all the officers to, so take advantage of the training, be patient, and hopefully, you're here for a long time, and I wish you a long career, and I wish you a very safe career.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes, I'd love to welcome you. I'm happy to see your smiling face here. Good luck.
Thank you.
I'm sure we'll see a lot of you.
Congratulations and good luck.
Thank you.
It's good to see a woman doing this type of job.
Welcome and good luck.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome to the city, and hope you have a long career here.
Thank you.
Welcome as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, welcome to the City of Crestille. We look forward to working with you.
Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I do not, Mayor. I have nothing else on the agenda. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of the police chief?
No.
All right, thanks, Ed.
Thank you.
Mayor's report, I have nothing on the agenda this evening. If there's any questions, I'll certainly try to answer them. Hearing none, we will move on to our city clerk's report. Vicki Hackney.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I do have four items on the agenda this evening. The first item is a request from Remington Lakes Homeowners Association for use of the council chambers on Tuesday, October 15, from 7 until 9 p.m. The calendar has been checked, and this date is available. A motion would be requested.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Alderman Schler, seconded by Alderman Oberlin. Questions or comments in regards to the request for the Remington Lakes HOA? Roll call, please.
Joe Kubo.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Marco Colli Petro.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Epstein.
John Verche.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Barbara Schaller.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries. The second item I have on the agenda is approval of the executive session minutes for the closed sessions from January 2017 through December 2017, and January 2018 through December 2018. And a motion would be in order for that. So moved, just presented.
Second. Motion by Alderman Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Colli Petro in regards to the executive session minutes. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubo.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Barbara Schaller.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Marco Colli Petro.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries. The next motion would be requested to approve the executive session minutes recommended for release by the city administrator, Heather McGuire, for the period of January 2017 through December 2017, and January 2018 through December 2018. And a motion would be in order for that also.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Colli Petro, seconded by Alderman Oberlin. Questions or comments in regards to the approval of release of executive session minutes? Roll call.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubo.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Barbara Schaller.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marco Colli Petro.
Yes.
Motion carries. The last item I have on the agenda this evening is a request for permission to have a block party by Dave Wilkins. He resides at 1260 Park Place Court. He's requesting closure of the cul-de-sac only to be blocked off for June 29, 2019, from 4 until 7 p.m. This was received late this week, that's why it's in the back, it's late. And a motion would be in order for that also.
That's in the...
Yes, it is, the gated.
So, yeah, but I'm just saying, it seems kind of weird, but okay. So moved, just presented.
Just he's requested it, so.
Correct. Motion by Alderman Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Colli Petro for the block party request. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubo.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Barbara Schaller.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Marco Colli Petro.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries, and we will notify him accordingly of that. That's all I have on the agenda this evening. Any questions at clerk's office, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Questions of city clerk. Thanks, Vic.
Thanks, Ray.
City treasurer's report. Glenn Conklin, our treasurer.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to report regular overtime payroll from May 27, 2019 through June 9 of 2019 in the amount of $232,126.41. The only item I seek action on is I request your approval on our list of bills, which totals $726,588.86.
So moved, just presented.
Second. Motion by Alderman Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Dyke in regards to the list of bills. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
John Verche.
Yes.
Barbara Schaller.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Marco Colli Petro.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubo.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you all very much. If you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer them.
Questions of city treasurer.
Thank you.
Unfinished business. We have nothing on the agenda. Anybody? You are from the food pantry? My apologies. I was waiting for Mr. George to come in.
Yeah, I think for some reason he had to go to the public.
Okay. Okay, so why don't you come on up to the podium? We'll take care of it now under unfinished business. I don't know what his actual request was of her, it was just for a business promotion for the food pantry, or you could certainly, just whatever you'd like. Just if you could state your name.
Yeah, my name is Dory Johnson.
Okay.
I also thank you to her, too, because my husband, he worked for the Royal County Share for 28, 30 years, and I know how to feel when you, you know, he go to work and you wait for night.
Yes.
I said, thank you. Happy to see a woman, you know, do that. I'm from the Caribbean, I speak Spanish. Larry sent me from the family outreach, you know Larry?
I do. We all do.[1348.91] We all do.
He sent me to tell you and see we can get a help because one of those trucks is brought down. We got three trucks, and we give food like every month, 800,000 family, and they waiting for the food, no matter you have the food now, and we had to look at it. I helping him for 14 years. I like to help him, you know, we know. I donate my time double. And the reason is because we need some freezer too, because we, I think it is the only one emergency mobile pantry in the area. And we got, we no got the most freezer. And when the food bank send the food to us, he not tell, they not tell us how much they send. And for a couple time, I had to ask like a foodfuling. They can keep the meat for us because it's too much to give away in one day, and because when they give it to you, whatever they give you, you had to divide for two week. I helping Larry to do, send cleaner to pick up and order food for people because I know they need it and they wait it, and we want to know they, you guys can help with us.
So you're asking for a donation from the city for a new truck?
Yeah, he said you got anybody can donate a freezer or money to buy one, and or anybody have any truck, like a semi truck, we can do pick up.
Okay.
Because we got three, so the one is bread, the broth, like we can use it, and we use one. We need all three because we use one for dry food, one for produce, and one for daily. We can not put the meat food together.
Right.
And.
What type of freezer are they looking for? A chest freezer? What type of freezer?
It's like long, big one. I don't know how you call them.
Where you lift it up and it's like a big chest?
Yes.
Okay, a chest freezer. Okay.
I don't know. I mean, we got room for three, one, two, or three, whatever they, you can find any donation. Yesterday, I have a chance to buy one for $150, but because I don't have nobody to go with me to drive to Chicago, I lost the sale, and he sold to somebody else, or they cost like $600, and he trying to give it to me for $150, but I can, you know, I need somebody yesterday, and I don't find nobody, and I lost the sale.
Okay, so, just so you understand, okay? When Larry sent me the email this morning, and I assumed he was coming here this evening, he didn't tell me what he, what his request was. So I was unsure. But you're asking for a monetary donation from the city. We can't do that tonight because it's not on our agenda.
Okay.
Okay? So we would have to bring this back next week to a work session if council was willing to make a donation to the food pantry for the purchase of one of your freezer chests.
Or anybody have a truck want to donate it?
Mayor, if I may, it sounds like she's maybe more, asking for more if anybody in the community is also eager to donate these items, so.
I get that also. I don't know of anybody, you know, if council knows of anybody that.
Maybe one. Get, you know, we're on live TV tonight, possibly share the phone number for the pantry, so if somebody watching is interested in financial support or donating something like that, they can certainly reach out to the food pantry.
I think that's what I want, you know.
All right, why don't you give us the phone number that you could be contacted at then? Because it's all going through you, I would assume?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you.
You want to give the phone number? Your phone number? 779-227-9348.
And what was your first name?
Doris Johnson, yeah. Sorry for my English not to.
Oh, you're fine. You are fine. And, you know, many of us have been sitting up here a long time. We know the good work that the food pantry does. Every week, every week, you know, we've, it's kind of moved all over the city, and now it's behind the Hillcrest Shopping Center every Thursday morning, correct? From 7:00 to 9:00. And there's probably about 200 to 250 vehicles that come through the food pantry every week that your organization takes care of. So we're all well aware of how important it is, because it's not only for Crestille residents, it's for the surrounding communities that use the service, services that you provide to put food on the table. So we appreciate everything you're doing. So we will, we can certainly speak about a donation from the city next Monday night at our work session, and we can bring it back 1st of July if that's their choice. As far as the vehicle, we can certainly, you know, you're on television now, they replay it 48 times. We can put it on the website. Anything else, like we can help to get the word out if anybody is willing to donate.
Okay. Thank you very much. Felicia.
Anything? Okay. Anybody else? Comments? Okay. Thanks, Doris. All right, new business. There's nothing on the agenda. Anybody? Committee liaison reports.
Well, first off, I want to thank everyone who attended the Ladis Memorial Ceremony. We were blessed with a very beautiful day. I know there were several people from city. Joe was there, Nate was there. Glenn was there.
It's right here.
Did you hold that up for me? I do need something. There were several people from the city there. We'll move on with that, but I did want to thank Tom and the Public Works gentlemen, Brian Simpulinski, Johnny Price, Billy King, Eric Bouchon, and Mitchell Halaska for all their help in sprucing things up and making the day go so beautifully, setting up the day, and cable TV for taping it. I also want to thank Marco and his wife who donated a couple of blue hydrangeas that I planted there. Tell your wife one of them died, but we're going to, the other one's doing wonderful. Yeah, okay. But most of all, I want to thank Jason Privian. He lives in our ward, and he got in touch with us and has been going over there, and he still is, working so diligently at that. He's going to tuck point the bricks. I mean, he is just giving his heart and soul, and he wanted me to tell people he's doing it in memory of his uncle, Irv Kopecki, who actually was one of the people who built the monument, and I think that's really touching. He's gotten involved in that, and he wants to continue to be involved in that, and he was at the ceremony this year, and he was very impressed. And I want to thank our bakers, Vicki Janlory, Karen from the city clerk's office, Maribel. Glenn, I don't know if you baked anything or just did the whipped cream, but.
Vicki and I worked together on the frizzels.
Ah, yeah, the frizzies. Thank you for that. Oh, boy. Right on TV.
It's her iron.
Also, the council general, and I'm not even going to attempt to say his name, but the actual council general and the assistant were here, and I spoke with them at great length, and he was so impressed with everything. He couldn't thank me enough. He about, he could not believe that in the city that we have done that for all these years, and he was so touched. He told me he couldn't wait to get back to Ladis and Czechoslovakia and tell everybody that and show them all the pictures of what happens here in our city every year. So when you hear something like that, it's very moving to know how affected he was by it. And he grew up in the town, I believe, next door to the original Ladis, so it really meant a lot to him. So I appreciate everything everybody did, and we had a great day. So thank you once again for all of that. Thank you, Nate. I know you baked, you didn't bake your brownies, but you did take home a pie, right?
I did take home a pie, yeah.
So, thanks, everybody. It was a great day. It really makes our city look wonderful, and I appreciate it. Thanks. Nate, you want to talk about the picnic?
Yeah, I can talk quickly about the picnic. You know, save the date. It's Sunday, August 4th, which is quickly approaching at St. Joe's Park from noon to 10:00 p.m. Just like years past, it's a fun-filled day with a lot of activities, you know, including bingo, the Crestille Women's Civic League Bake Sale, Charlie the Balloon Clown, Sparkles the Face Painter, free kids games and crafts from noon to 5:00. There'll be the Crestille Police and the Joyet Masons doing the child DNA ID and fingerprinting.[1488.73]